All right. Everybody ready? Get the meeting started then. We're going to call them meeting the order of the Lake Stevens Planted Commission. Time is 6:02 PM and we will skirt with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody can call, everybody stand up, put their hands on their head. Do we have a flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation under God.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you guys hear me? Okay, I got a brand new microphone, so it's. I'm just trying it out the first time, so. All right, if we can do a roll call, so. Go with Commissioner Husford.
Here.
Commissioner Osland.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
Commissioner Dewar.
Here.
And if I understand it right, Commissioners Davis and Chair Cronin will not be here, so I get a motion to excuse both of them.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the absent commissioners. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Now, next is guest business. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to the commission? On any issue other than the public hearing that we're going to have on the personal use table?
We have no guests at this time.
All right, then we will move on to our next item, which will be approved of the minutes from August 18th. Hope everybody's had a chance to review. Does anybody have any changes they wish to suggest for the for the commission?
Chair Welch, I have one minor. This is Janice. I have, it was, and it's so minor. It was Commissioner Davis that was talking about the immunizations for autoimmune. Rather than Commissioner Dewar.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections? Are you not, I get a motion to approve the amended minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
A second. Got a motion in a second to approve the amendments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. unanimous vote. Our next thing is going to be a public hearing on the permissible use table. Just so everybody know that this is a legal hearing, so what we're going to do is we'll have a staff presentation. I'm going to open the public hearing, excuse me, of a staff presentation. The commissioners will discuss with staff. And then we'll open up to public comments and after that the commission can move on to an action. So that we're under that, I'm opening the public hearing at this time and I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Planner Needham to brief the commission.
I will actually turn the floor over to Mini Manager Levitan. He has a PowerPoint to share with us tonight, so I'm raising the code amendment.
Yes, I'm going to do a real quick PowerPoint and then we're available for questions. I would suggest directing most of that to Assistant Planner Needham, who was the driving force behind this code amendment, so, but I'll be available to answer questions as well. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, so. Thank you, Vice Chair Welch. Commissioners David Levitan, planning manager, so we're here tonight for the public hearing for an update to our permissible uses chapter, which is chapter 14.40, as well as associated updates to the Lake Stevens Municipal Code. Just a bit of the background information on permissible uses, which we've had a number of work sessions on. Chapter 1440 regulates a variety of different uses. Really, the the kind of driving force behind that chapter is Table 1440-I, which breaks down a wide variety of uses by zoning district. What's permitted outright is shown as a P. What's permitted with an administrative conditional use permit is shown with an A. What's permitted with a conditional use permit, which is a type three land use application that requires a public hearing before the hearing examiner is shown as a C. And then if there's a blank space, our code shows that it is not permitted within that zone. And so we do not currently address a number of uses that are within our sub area plans. So that's basically the sub areas are included in a separate chapter currently, and they will continue to be in chapter 1438, but we wanted to provide a better linkage between those uses that are not currently identified in the permissible use table to at least provide reference to that and to note where to look for those and to note that chapter 1438 supersedes 1440 when there are conflicts. And then there's some additional items related to the code amendments related to supplementary use regulations, which are found in chapter 1444, where there are also a number of amendments that are proposed as part of this proposal. So going back to when we first briefed the planning commission on this, it was actually almost a year ago. It was in October of 2020 and had kind of a number of basic goals. Really, it was to updating consolidate the table and the rest of the chapter, especially where it was overly detailed or antiquated. We wanted to really clean up the introduction, what we came to be called the preamble that touches on things such as accessory uses and how we evaluate similar uses. The existing table is all one table that just kind of goes on and on across multiple pages, so we wanted to better classify that and break that out into three different tables with those tables being residential, non-residential, and special uses. And then we had a number of items that we saw where we had uses that currently require either administrative conditional use permits or outright conditional use permits that we thought that we could improve and revise a number of supplementary use regulations to provide more clear and objective standards so that more uses could be outright permitted. Then, as I already mentioned, part of it was to better tie in chapter 1438, which deals with our sub areas, which are a number of zoning districts that are largely confined to those sub areas, but which extend beyond the sub area boundaries in a couple of areas. And so we wanted to provide a better linkage between chapter 1438 and chapter 1440. So as I mentioned, started this back about 11 months ago. Planning Commission has had seven work sessions, including four in-depth meetings over about the course of the last four or five months, where commissioners really got in and provided excellent feedback. Provided very specific changes that they wanted to see. Identified a number of topical areas that they really thought were important to update. We also briefed the city council three times over the course of the last year, just kind of an update and provided them with a lot of the feedback that the planning commission provided. They were generally very comfortable with the direction of the proposed amendment. We've sent out the 60-day notice to the Department of Commerce back in August, the middle of August, and also circulated draft code language to the Chamber of Commerce to see if they had any comments. Today, we haven't received any comments, but we're happy to continue to try to reach out and solicit comments on the proposed language. And then the staff issued a SEPA determination of non-significance back on September, September 1st concurrently with the notice of public hearing. So as you'll see in the package tonight, in attachment one, there are a number of highlights that I wanted to point out, kind of just the major items that are included in the proposed amendment. As I mentioned, splitting the table, the existing permissible use table into three separate tables, and then organizing those uses by next codes, which are North American industrial codes that kind of classify and consolidate a variety of different uses and in kind of one package of different uses. It required a number of revisions to chapter 1408, which is the definition section of the municipal code. Within the preamble to chapter 1440, we added a section on uses in sub areas and how the sub area chapter in 1438 is associated with chapter 1440. And then also added in a new kind of introductory section in chapter 1440 related to supplementary use regulations. Within 1444, which is the supplementary use regulations chapter, we decided to move home occupations into that chapter. It was previously in the land use actions chapter. And then there were just a number of kind of minor things that we did. The noise regulations were kind of very, very detailed and were things that we really couldn't enforce based on our current staffing, and so we instead simplified that to reference the applicable section of the Washington Administrative Code or WAC. And then we updated number of parking requirements to match the use designations in the updated permissible use tables. So over the course of the last couple of meetings, the past couple of work sessions with the planning commission, we had, you know, very robust discussions and just wanted to highlight a couple of those things. Some of the specific direction that we received from the planning commission was included that retail issues should continue to require or should require an administrative conditional use permit in industrial zones, while restaurants, which are needed within our industrial areas, should be outright permitted. We had a number of meetings where we discussed the issue of whether detached single-family residences and accessory dwelling units should could should continue to be allowed within our multifamily residential zone, and the consensus from commissioners was that should be the case that we shouldn't, you know, either prohibit or make those an administrative or conditional use within those zones, so those will continue to be as proposed outright permitted within the MFR zone. We discussed some additional requirements for storage facilities, and the general feedback was that commissioners wanted a little bit more explanation on what the required economic feasibility analysis would look like. And we tried to provide that in the revised language, but that's given that these storage facility uses do take up a lot of the city's employment land, it was warranted to require some additional analysis. We talked a little bit about home occupations in non-conforming residences, meaning homes that are in either an industrial or commercial zone, such as our sub areas or industrial areas. And the thought was that home occupations should continue to be allowed within those residences. We made some kind of minor revisions to odor thresholds that Commissioner Huxford pointed out that we maybe don't have the five qualified sniffers on staff to really implement the code as it was written, so we made some simple revisions to that. And in general, there's some additional detail on the proposed amendments on pages six through seven of the meeting packet. So with that, as noted in the staff report, the code amendment meets the approval criteria for land use code amendments found in chapter 14.16C.075. Or this is a type six land use code amendment, so there's a required public hearing before the planning commission and the planning commission makes a recommendation that then is forwarded on to the city council where they hold a separate public hearing. Staff has found that the proposal meets SEPA and public notice requirements. And staff is recommending that the planning commission open up the proposal for public comment this evening, and at the conclusion of that, that the commission forward a recommendation to the city council to approve the proposal and to amend the Lake Stevens Municipal Code as shown in attachment one. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions, as is Jill and Russ.
All right, thank you so much for that detailed brief. At this time, do any commissioners have any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. This time, anybody from the public that wish to make a comment for the record for this hearing can do so now, so. Do we have anybody in the? All right. Then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and back to the commissioners for actually, let me close the public hearing and then come back to the commissioners if they have any other suggestions or any actions they wish to take.
Thank you, Chair Welch, and I'm back, by the way. You were right. It was some sort of filter thing that I hit between my last meeting and this one. Um, I have a quick question. And I was figuring that out really quickly, and you probably visited this, the odor revision. Where, where in the table, I'm going between a couple of screens, where in the table is that? So, and before you spend time looking at that, what you did is just revise it. It's not what it was written as before, correct? It was what we had last, last meeting, correct?
So we revised the language. Let me look at it specifically.
When I had it, I had it up, and then I went back out, and now I'm bringing it up on my little.
So it is on page, page 39 of your packet at the bottom. It's in section 1444.230. So instead of a panel of five healthy observers, we just changed it to be on the subject property, which is generally the standard that we use, that the owner should be confined to an individual property.
Okay. And does that, and this is might be beyond the actual table, but does that include sewer district property as well, or sewer district property, their own islands within the city?
So this particular section, I mean, it's, it doesn't call out specific use if in subsection B of 1444.230, it just says no subject use in any district. May generate any odor that reaches the odor threshold. And so it would generally apply, so if there needed to be some carve out or some caveat that there are special uses or utility uses that would require some sort of exemption, that's some language we could potentially look at.
I'm only questioning because of the project down on Machias that has caused a lot of concern with the neighborhood around that, and then the special notice that's up there right now, saying that there's going to be attention paid to that, but has not been. And so if we're going to address odor, and I appreciate you bringing it to what we discussed before, but that was a comment that I thought merited at least discussion briefly this evening and perhaps in front of city council. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Any other comments or questions of staff before we move forward? With hearing none, is, is there any motion or recommendation from the council, from the commission?
I would, I would move that we vote to adopt and recommend the proposal here as written.
We have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve and to move forward to the city council. Any other discussion before we move forward? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Move on to our next item, which will be a discussion item, and that will be on the non-conforming issues and your plan or place. You have the floor.
Good evening, Commission. Before you tonight is your third briefing on our non-conforming code update. So we held a briefing in August and we did revise this draft code to incorporate your input from the August meeting. And we're just asking tonight for you to review the revised code language as attached and indicate whether you're ready to hold a public hearing at one of your October meetings. So at the 18th, the meeting on the 18th of August, we had several specific questions that we discussed in detail, and you provided general feedback on several areas, including sub areas and language about benign versus detrimental, not creating additional opportunities to expand conforming uses through a more formal public process via hearing examiner or planning commission. Did not want to include amortization clauses or provisions in the code, and then also making sure that the code still allows for the retention of single-family residences, including within the sub areas. We also talked about determining the threshold for rebuilding and talked about it at 75% and addressed substandard septic systems don't need to be specifically discussed in the code itself because they're adequately dressed in other code sections and regulations within the Lake Stevens Code. And also, we talked about the addition of a story to a building and whether that would expand the footprint of the building and it should be treated as an expansion of a non-conformity. So based on that feedback from the August meeting, I did make revisions to the draft code as shown in attachment one in the staff report. Removing language about sub areas, amortization, the substandard septic systems, hearing body process, and benign versus detrimental, non-conformies, also revise the purpose and intent statement to more accurately capture what the code is doing as it's been drafted. And then also revised section C of 1432 of the new code to provide more clarity on what constitutes an expansion to a non-conformity. So that additional building stories, as long as they don't expand the building footprint and they meet setbacks, would not be a concern from a non-conforming standpoint. So we also updated mainly the language and the terminology, as you can see in the draft code, and I had recently attended a case law update with Phil O'Brack, who's known for case law in Washington. And one of the, well, there actually, there were several cases on non-conforming uses, which was fairly helpful to this code update. And one of them specifically talked about language and codes using abandonment and termination versus vacation cessation. And at the end of the, the update, they talked about recommending vacation cessation versus abandonment and termination, basically based on a case in Brown versus Mason County. So I changed our language to update that, so it allows for more flexibility. And then, lastly, we would like to revisit the conversation about the 75% evaluation threshold for rebuilding. We're concerned it wouldn't be consistent with the purpose and intent that we drafted, and ultimately, the bigger concern is just the city's future job targets in the sub areas have a required economic growth, and that might be a challenge in trying to rebuild the non-conforming structures there. So we would like to hold additional discussion with you on this, on that this evening. So the next steps, we are scheduled to brief the city council on this at the staff report, I said, the September 21st meeting, that's now moved to the September 28th city council meeting. And I did provide 60-day notice to the Department of Commerce on this already. And I guess really the next step is where you're at comfort wise on holding a public hearing for this. You know, would you like to hold it in October, or do you want to come back with another revision of this for further discussion? So that concludes my presentation tonight, and I'm just happy to answer any questions you might have at this time and also receive any input you have on the draft code. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. This is, so we opened up to the rest of the commissioners on any discussion with and see how we want to move forward and direct some of these questions that are asked of staff for us. So, does any commissioner have anything they would like to add or discuss?
We, we all always say this, but the person who's not in the meeting is the one that has brought up the most comments about what we are there to discuss, if I worded that correctly. And I know that Commissioner Davis has been the one that has brought up several times that threshold, that 75% threshold. And then I'm wondering if Chair Cronin, what meetings he was in on this prior to this, it seems like we've discussed this a lot, but he has had some, some moments where he has not been in attendance, and I'm wondering how many times he has heard this. Not that I, not that I want to belabor the point, but I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not they would have any input if we were to go for another discussion, or should we just have it be open to public with their comments during that public hearing? Do any of the other commissioners have a comment on that?
I would say from my point of view, since we've discussed it several times, I'd like to go ahead to a public hearing, and if they wish to add on, then we can add on to there too. And we can also get some of the public input at the same time and just probably finish it up at that point and move forward with whatever we come up with. I think another discussion, I think we just handle all the next public hearing or at a public hearing, would be my opinion.
I would agree with Commissioner Welch on that sentiment. We've had a couple of discussions on this, and I'd hate to kick the can further down the road. You know, by having another meeting before we decide whether to have a public, a public hearing on it.
I concur. I just wanted to hear it from other people first.
Do any commissioners have a opinion on the 75% or 50% of for the threshold?
I, I personally thought it was, it was 75% was fair. Just for all the reasons that we've had in the past. And I understand the reasoning that that's being questioned. But I think it puts people, as what's been stated before, people with some legacy here in a bind.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other opinion on that, whether or not we should change it or not, or leave it at 75? All right, here, now, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Huxford. I think, I think 75 would be, would be fine. I don't really want to penalize somebody who's now non-conforming after a change by the city because something happened to their property without, you know, not because of something they did. And so I kind of like the, the 75% is a little bit more of a higher threshold than 50, especially depending on as times change, especially with as we annex more places in. Is there any other? Senior Planner Places, was there any other issues you wanted us to do with? I'm sorry, I'm I'm looking at multiple screens and multiple documents, so.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Welch. Now, just to respond, I believe that Commissioner Cronin was at the first meeting, but wasn't at last meeting and isn't tonight, so I guess he's seen it once. And then in response to 75%, you know, we did take a look at several other jurisdictions in the initial discussion we had in July, and I went back to those jurisdictions and really it varies. So some have 75, some have 50%, and some split it up between structures versus non-conforming uses, if I recall. So it really does vary throughout jurisdictions, just if that adds anything to the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. During my research, I kind of saw the same thing. I was going through the MRSC around this issue and going through all the different cities they had listed, and it does vary quite heavily, so. I appreciate that. Is there anything else anybody would like to add to the discussion before we move forward?
I like the idea of clarity and not making it, I mean, making it as easy as possible, which is exactly what this whole exercise is about, is making it as clear and unencumbered as possible, so everybody understands the same thing. And so to differentiate between the type of things, I think would be maddening for everybody. I would say one number, and, and I just think that 75 is, is fair and equitable. But I'll be interested to hear what the public has to say, and then what the two commissioners that are missing this evening have to add.
Thank you. I agree. You hit basically all the points I would think about on this also. So any other discussion or changes? Hearing none, so I'm going to guess we all agree with what's on there so far, and we're ready for a public hearing then.
Agreed.
All right. I guess everybody's got, we're ready to move on with that one then and get this all handled up. So, thank you so much, Senior Planner Place. We appreciate your efforts on this. I know it's a very daunting task, and your efforts are greatly appreciated in the whole matter. It's very good. It's all been done very well.
Thank you for the input tonight. I'll move forward with drafting notice of public hearing and then also briefing the commission on September 20. Thank you for the input tonight. I'll move forward with drafting notice of public hearing and then also briefing the commission on September twenty eighth.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we can move on to commissioners reports and I will go around, I'll see you on my screen. So Commissioner Doerr.
I have no report tonight.
I'm sure Ozlin.
No report. Thanks.
Commissioner Holt.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when are we going to get to meet in person? I'm still wondering.
I still don't have an answer.
Okay.
I would say with recent changes in the mandates of working a more restrictive, I fear, I have a feeling that we have a lot longer left to go before it would be. Conducive to meet in person, not just for us, but for the public, because I have a feeling it would be a hybrid, which would be very complicated, probably.
Well, but here's the thing is we just had a public hearing and we had no public attending. At least if we were meeting in person, maybe people would show up and we could get some additional feedback. So I think people don't know how to zoom or they don't understand how to get in. And so I guess it would be nice to be able to meet in person and actually get that feedback, hopefully one day. So that's it.
I agree. And I think I think that day is coming. I mean, I think we were on the verge of until recent setbacks, so I'm sure it's in the near future, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
No, no, that was it.
Thank you. Commissioner Huxford.
Two things. One, as promised, and thank you Director Wright, in our last meeting, there was a commitment made that the signage was going to go up to lower the speed limit on South Lake Stevens Road. It has. The traffic revision has been noted and very well received in this area. We're hoping for police enforcement and we do really appreciate the fact that 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 promise was honored to those of us that were recently annexed. The other thing is, and I brought it up earlier today, the the happy news story of speed limit is a little bit dampened by the odor of that. Lift station there on Machias and one sixteenth. It is now getting to a fevered pitch when it comes to the neighbors that are closest to that. And I actually was out in that area early this morning myself and it is foul. So they are rightly justified in wanting something done. It's been signed for about a month now, but I don't know what the fix is and I don't know whether or not it is the city's to fix. But if there's anything in the wording that we're working on that would include something to oversee that as well, or at least have some sort of say in that as well. I would urge as we build out more and more of the city that that not become something that happens to more neighborhoods like it has this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For myself, I have nothing to report except for to say to Director Wright. How great the the staff presentations were and have been lately on these very complicated issues that we've had as of late. And thank you to your team. Other than that, I'll turn over to Director Wright.
All right. Well, thank you for the kind words to the staff. They all, you know, try to present professional materials to you, you know, an easy to understand manner. So I appreciate that feedback. I did want to spend a little bit of time with the commission tonight and show you a presentation. About some of the recent growth changes. The Buildable Lands Report was just completed and adopted by the county council. And we're in preliminary discussions right now with our growth targets. So I thought that would be of interest to the commission. And I'll go through those numbers with you and these slides. And then if you have any questions at the end or questions about anything else, happy to have that discussion.
Thank you.
All right. Has everyone seen my screen? Okay. So earlier, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had the council's retreat and gave them some of these numbers. Some of the numbers will be new for you to see. So what we had done before is just go over the statistics of the city where we are now with the recent growth. The city's over seven thousand acres now. There's about three hundred acres remaining in our urban growth area. Our twenty twenty one population estimate was just under thirty seven thousand. With the annexation and those reconciled numbers were just under thirty nine thousand for population at this point. And the city has ninety eight employees and looking to bring on several more employees in twenty twenty two. And that would be across all departments to, you know, continue to meet the demands of our growth. And to put this graphically, if we look back at around two thousand, the city's population was about six thousand. And it was this area up here. And then you can see subsequently through the years, through annexation. And then through development because of annexation where the city is today. So these are the little pockets of remaining unincorporated areas, which obviously has grown the the population. And then what's been kind of interesting is just to show you what the growth strategy looks like that the council set out in around two thousand eleven. To create specific growth centers, what we've achieved in that timeframe. So if you want to look at our residential growth between two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty, I broke it down into some smaller categories. So if we look two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, we saw some moderate growth, about nine hundred and thirty four new single family homes. And then if you look between two thousand nineteen and twenty, from all of the land use and platting activities in the earlier years. You see this ramp up to about half the amount that was in that whole six year period was accomplished in about two years, plus the multifamily. As you look to what our active housing developments are, twenty one, that'll be built out probably by twenty three, twenty four. You have about another nine hundred single family units. And then this is an important number. That now we've seen about four hundred apartment units that are somewhere in the queue right now. And as we look into the future projects that are coming in that aren't applied for yet, you're seeing this number for multifamily mixed use. Starting to be a larger percentage than the single family. So that's all been part of the growth strategy that's been laid out. Some of the code amendments that the planning commission has worked on to make this community friendlier to different housing types. And it's showing also that we have built out most of our single family area. And now, you know, looking to some new multifamily projects. And this number is pretty staggering. I know we've talked about the growth lots of time, but the cumulative numbers in over thirty one hundred, you know, new homes or dwellings. That's, you know, apartments and single family over the course of, you know, ten years. So that's a pretty staggering number across the county and definitely in the city. And this is the breakdown between, you know, what's that been with single family to multifamily? So about three to one at this point for single family. But again, that trend is changing. So we look at our buildable lands report. Citywide, we're just over or just under twelve thousand distinct housing units at this point. With the population, this is an older population number going back to two thousand nineteen, which is when buildable lands does its cutoff, two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. And that's what the target population was for the city at that time. As you can see now with annexation, we're just under that older growth target. And then again, we've talked about some of these things already and the projected surplus was going to be about twelve hundred residents at twenty thirty five. And then the remaining acres in the city, what we want to focus on is there's about seventy three remaining acres for residential development. And then about six hundred acres for partially used or redevelopable parcels. So that's where we'll see a lot of the focus in the coming years is in the infill development more than in the vacant land parcels.
Russ, can I ask you a real quick question on that last slide?
Absolutely.
On the, okay, I just ran out right. I was, I was looking for the the slash on the thing that's always, so that's in the UGA that still we have yet to annex, right?
Right. There it's a breakdown with much smaller acreage in the UGA. So for example, the total seventy three acres, fifty of that's in the city, twenty four, you know, approximately in the unincorporated.
All right, thanks.
Yep. And this is just the the chart that the county looks at as it compares the growth in all cities in their population. And Lake Stevens is right here between two thousand twelve and two thousand nineteen. We've achieved, you know, sixty percent of our growth in that seven year period. And then if you look down here with what the numbers were prior to the census data and the the current annexation being completed. You know, we hit ninety percent of that target when you're just doing, you know, simple, simple math at our our population target. And then as we look at commercial growth, this is the other part of it. Specifically, as we were talking to council, you know, they always have a question about what is economic development? What does that mean? And again, going back to that growth strategy, that was to establish the twentieth street subarea plan. The Lake Stevens Center Subarea Plan and then the most recent downtown plan with a fourth plan. You know, pending the latter half of this year and into next year, looking at the Machias and Hartford industrial areas. So cumulatively, again, over this last five years, the city's achieved over two hundred and sixty thousand square feet of new commercial industrial buildings. Some of that's in the industrial area, obviously. That includes the Costco, but it also includes Vernon Village. It does not include Trestle Station. It doesn't include the large. Storage facility near ninety two, but there has been a significant amount of growth. And then beyond just the new construction and commercial, we've seen major tenant improvements. Obviously, all of Frontier Village has seen a facelift with major national chains coming in. In one of the statistics that I think is pretty neat, we've also seen the growth of a lot of local small businesses, you know, LJ's, Meatheads, the new donut shop, biscuit and bean. So that's, that's a really cool statistic that there are local small businesses investing in the community. And that's been before COVID, during COVID and continues. So that's, that's a really good sign for the the health of our economy. And then in the works, there's about another fifty thousand square feet of commercial space up at the Silver Hill Complex on seven lots. We're seeing a car dealer that's going to come in on twentieth and a couple of mixed use projects downtown. So all of the planning that started about a decade ago is really starting to come to fruition. So just thought you'd like to to see the work that you've been part of. And then as we return to the buildable lands again, looking at the employment capacity, the city has about fifty five hundred jobs currently. Our target is about seventy four hundred jobs and that's the twenty thirty five target. And we do have a projected shortfall at that point of about a hundred and five jobs, et cetera. And then has the acreage again for employment areas like we saw before for residential. And then Lake Stevens on this chart, we're about in the middle of the pack, you know, achieving about forty five percent of that. Target out to twenty thirty five. So then the question is, well, what's next? You know, this is how we've done. The county has just started their conversations on the new growth targets and where do we fall in that horizon? And that's broken up by what's called regional geography and that is different types of cities. So there are high capacity transit cities, which is a city like Linwood or Mill Creek, Edmonds. There are core cities and metro cities, Everett being the only metro city. And then the cities and towns categories, which Lake Stevens is part of. And if you look at the cities and towns category, we have the highest amount of employment targets as well as the highest population target. And we'll be looking at the bookends as we move forward, but where they're looking to put our population target, and this is reconciled. So this takes the new growth target minus our surplus to come up with this new population target of just under forty eight thousand. And if you'll recall, our last target for our entire UGA was about fifty, excuse me, forty six thousand. So this is an overall increase and including the UGA, the new target's going to be around forty nine thousand population. We still think we'll meet that target, but it does bring into consideration our conversation for our UGA expansions in a couple of areas. To allow some additional residential. Then as we look at our job target, as you remember, our current target's about fifty five hundred. And the new job target would grow actually pretty substantially by about three thousand jobs. And this one, I'm still a little bit concerned about that we have the capacity to meet that job target. So that's still open to more conversation, obviously, with the county. And then with the the city council to give us some direction on where they would like to have us comment in in the span of these growth targets. And David has also been a part of this conversation on the growth allocation. If you have anything you want to add about, you know, this process so far, otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Director Wright, could you go back a couple of slides? Buildable, one more. That one. If if the vision, the one. That where you were before. The buildable land when it came to employment.
Okay.
Yes, that one. Thank you so much. If the vision that has been discussed and was discussed during the workshop last week again with city council. Is something that takes hold and the Hartford Industrial District becomes some sort of a marijuana tourism destination place. I think again that that is aggressive to think that that's going to be an employment hub. And a opportunity missed by the city if those goals are going to be set to be so lofty. So my two cents would be what they've always been in that, just like storage units, which we've discussed here tonight. Are not a great use for some of the land that could be used for better employment in our area. I think that that Hartford industrial area needs to be very carefully managed and. There needs to to be some more thought given to where some people think that that area needs to go. I'm wording this very carefully, but you're not going to meet your targets if that's the way that it goes.
Say that there's not consensus among the council, you know, what I, what I can say is the staff is getting ready to do an analysis of the infrastructure out there. We've already started that conversation with the sewer district and the PUD to gauge their capacity. We're going to be reaching out to broadband and other fiber network type providers to understand what their infrastructure needs are. And then we'll come out of that with a report suggesting very specific improvements going into next year. I'm going to be asking for a budgeted item to do a market analysis and a best use analysis for that site, which would be in line with what the council had talked about. Beginning of the year at their retreat, that they really want to look at what's the highest and best use. So this will be a little bit different than what we've done in the past as far as sub area planning. I think it's going to be a bit more incremental and obviously we need to know what the gaps are. Two, having broad employment out there and then two, figuring out what's the best and highest use. And then we'll come back and tackle any land use or incentives that need to go along with that. So that would be the program and obviously planning commission is going to have a large role in the the public outreach in that. Especially with a lot of the the landowners in that area and really trying to figure out again what's highest and best use. And I I would concur that I I think it has to be a broader look than some of the uses that have been dominating the conversation over the the past year.
I appreciate that. Is this presentation for public consumption yet?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's on YouTube right now.
Okay, that's, I mean, people have been asking, people that you know have been asking, so I will make sure that they're aware. Appreciate your comments.
Regarding the vacant land that we still have left, do we know how much is different between maybe larger areas and then what's a probably more infill?
So if we go back to for population, I'm assuming is what you're asking. So the the vacant, those are all going to be representative of generally larger parcels. parcels, especially if you look in the unincorporated areas where, well, the recently incorporated areas where there are some larger parcels in this area, larger parcels up here within the city proper, mostly they're going to be smaller acre-type sites.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one, I guess, clarification on the section where you were talking about kind of the housing stock and what's been built. On that slide is probably the third or fourth slide. Yeah. So when we talk about mixed use, you know, four hundred and twenty nine active housing developments, are we counting a development as one unit, you know, or are we counting, for example, if if you're building a duplex, is that considered one or is that considered two for that for that count?
Sure, the the duplexes would fall under the single family category, but each independent unit would be within that that count.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, well, as we move through this growth projection targets, definitely we'll bring this back to the Planning Commission, so you're aware of what we're looking like. But again, it's sort of this interesting period where you just get through the buildable lands and really understand what you have remaining in your stock. And then right on the heels of that is where do we go next? And then obviously, looking to the future, next year, we're probably going to start a housing action plan to look at what this remnant, these remnant parcels can actually facilitate. And then we'll be going to the major comprehensive plan update. So we have a lot of heavy-duty planning on your your near horizon.
Thank you, Russ. I had a question, which now that we talked about the buildable lands and the growth, I probably should ask it when there's commissioner time, but it just kind of dawned on me. With the anticipated growth in South Marysville that's happening right now, especially right across from Sober Hill Road, the two or three major developments that are actually starting already with some of the the land use. I thought when we worked with Marysville to for the widening of Sober Hill Road, there was a certain point where they would widen the rest of it towards Highway Nine and put another roundabout and work on that intersection. With these new developments, does that trigger that or that you know of?
So that's a an ongoing conversation we have with Marysville. The the trigger in the ILA was the development of the commercial area most close to the intersection at eighty seventh and Sober Hill. And we are actively tracking every residential project that goes in and commenting on their traffic reports. In fact, Melissa is the the point on that sphere. But yeah, we we actively communicate with Marysville on all of their projects.
I was just checking because the one basically right across where the big white house is now, that'll be gone. I know that's going to be a, I believe, a condo complex. So just to say, perhaps that's even more than, obviously, that's more than we anticipated, I thought. But I was hoping that would be triggering that widening of that road pretty soon.
Yeah. Like you say, that's something we're monitoring closely because I'm starting to get concerned about cumulative impacts that may occur ahead of whatever commercial development happens.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there any other comments by commissioners or staff? If not, I am ready. We'll have our, I'm going to guess our next meeting at the beginning of October. Do we have enough? We have something that will be, we have we have a workbook that will be ready for that meeting.
Dave, where are we at on the next meeting?
Yeah, so we would have the public hearing for nonconformities. We would have kind of a final work session on the comp plan, which we keep the meeting to bring back, but has been getting pushed out, but we need to have that public hearing in November. So we're going to kind of do basically all of the elements. Pretty minor update, as Russ mentioned, we'll be doing pretty minor updates for the next couple of years, leading into the periodic update in twenty twenty four, which we're going to be starting relatively shortly. So those are the the two major items on that. I I don't think that we have really anything else that needs to go before Planning Commission, so we should just need the one meeting in October.
So October sixth?
October sixth.
Okay, but not October twentieth?
Correct. Yeah, I'm not aware of anything that needs to come back before Planning Commission for that for that second meeting.
Okay, so we'll pencil in for the sixth, and hopefully we'll have everything where we won't not need the twentieth, if all possible. All right, that's good to know. And anything else before we conclude the meeting? Hearing nothing? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Thank you all very much, and everybody have a nice week. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.